Good evening. This is a Kettering City Council Workshop. Tonight, or the day's date today is December the 15th. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We'll kind of follow the normal format again tonight. So Steve, if you want to go ahead and throw up the PowerPoint. So on the first slide, you'll see for agenda review tonight, obviously, we don't have a lot of items tonight. We have the personnel ordinance and the 2021 budget appropriation. So I'll, I'll take both of those items, Your Honor, during the council meeting tonight. And with the appropriation, I have seven or eight quick slides that I'll go through rather quickly that are from Kelly's presentation from last week's workshop, just so that we have that in the record for the council meeting tonight. Are there any questions on any of those two items?
Anybody have any questions?
All right, so we'll, we'll get right into some other workshop items tonight. First is the county auditor update. At the last workshop, we, you know, presented that we had new numbers coming from the county auditor for the reevaluation. And the, originally, we had the 7% countywide gain. Kettering was about 9.2%. We estimated that roughly in the $470,000 range. So on Thursday of last week, they presented the final numbers that were negotiated with the state. And they ended up really somewhere in the neighborhood of a 15% countywide adjustment. And on the next slide, we got some numbers for you now related to Kettering and the totals for the county. So it was a $3.5 billion increase for the county, which puts the county value at around $30 billion, which puts it slightly above where we were when we started with the recession in 2008. So that's essentially a full recovery in about 12 years. If you remember back in 2008, when we lost all that value, the county auditor had indicated that the last time we had a value of that great a loss, it took 17 years to get that value back. So a little ahead of that schedule. The county's increase is 13.3%. The residential is 15.5. The commercial is around 8%, which is actually a minimal change from July. So essentially, what the state did is they rejected the residential numbers and were okay with the commercial numbers. The city of Kettering's increase is now 17.36%. And our residents will get their first notification of that after Christmas, and then the bills will come out in January. And I think I mentioned at the last meeting, but the difference really between the county auditor and the state for the residential in particular is that traditionally, the county uses a three-year average of home sales to calculate percentage increases related to actual arms-length transactions. The state of Ohio decided that since 2019 was such a turnaround year for housing values, they only use 2019 for their calculation. They believe that was more reflective of the current values of the houses. So that's how you got the, the significant difference from that regard. So obviously, tonight's budget appropriation will not indicate any of these changes to property taxes, but there will be some additional revenue. I'd speculate somewhere in the neighborhood of about $300,000 when we're all said and done with the, with the estimates and the calculations. So that will be helpful as we go into next year. Obviously, not quite as helpful for our individual residents, though. We will see quite a bit of an increase and, or may see quite a bit of an increase. The Board of Revisions will still apply. So the residents will receive information with their mailing, letting them know exactly how the Board of Revisions process will work and how they can apply for that. So that's all I have on the county auditors update. I know we sent you the slides, but I wanted to go over that quickly with you tonight and happy to answer any questions.
Mark? I just have a question about the, the full recovery back to 2008 is in the value of the property in Montgomery County. Do you know, did anybody say how many dollars that equated to in 2008 versus what it'll be in 2021 or 2022?
No, they did not. You're right. Your assumption is correct. It's the total value of properties. They did not give us a value of dollars collected because at the time he gave the presentation on Thursday, the abstract was not yet complete and sent to the state. And the abstract is essentially the raw data that calculates tax bills. And that information was not yet available on Thursday when Carl was talking. So he did not present any numbers like that.
That, that's when we're gonna see it because you can't say, you didn't say it, but I said, we couldn't say, well, we're gonna be paying the same as what we paid in 2008 because the value of our properties are the same as that.
Yeah, certainly can do that. And also, obviously, from 2008 to 2020, we also have changes in millage for residents as well, whether, you know, new school levies, county levies, library levies, whatever it might be. So yeah, it would take a little bit of work on an individual household to kind of do an apples-to-apples equation.
Mark, I got a question. You said that Montgomery County used just the 19 data versus a three-year comparison. What did other counties do? Were we alone in doing just 219? Or we missed the boat by not doing?
So hopefully, I didn't reverse that, Your Honor.
You didn't.
The state took 2019. The county presented the three-year average. So the state was the one who dictated the one-year number. So I would have to assume that that applies to all the counties. Well, I know it does. Carl made that, made mention of that in his presentation. He also made mention that of the 40, I believe it was 41 counties who went through the reevaluation process in 2020, the state rejected 25 of the county's submissions. So at least 25 of the 41, they made significant changes to the county's recommendations.
I mean, this is gonna be a nice little increase for our residents, which I think are gonna find it somewhat problematic if they're older and on fixed incomes.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, it's always the same with real estate taxes. You want your value to be high so that you have value in your home for sales, but you want your value to be low when you make those two payments a year. So certainly is gonna have an impact in January when residents receive these. Any other questions on the auditor?
Hey, Mark? One other question. Of the total millage in Kettering, how many, what percentage of the millage will actually increase? All of it's not going to increase with the valuation.
Yeah, and, and that's why they can't really tell each individual resident what their, about their tax bill's gonna be, nor can they tell the city how much revenue they're gonna get. Because the only math calculation that you could apply globally is you could take the percentage increase on the calculation of the inside millage. But the rest of the millage, which is, you know, the inside millage is, I'm gonna say 1/8 of the total millage. The rest of the millage is outside millage. And as you know from your days in the schools, those are dollar amount levies. So all it does when the value goes up is just kind of decrease the millage to collect the same dollar amount. And as Carl indicated Thursday, it's a, it's a gross simplification, but could be somewhat accurate. 1/3 of the homes are gonna see increases, 1/3 will see no change, and 1/3 will see decreases, even with a 17% or 15.5% increase. There will still be property owners who have values that are taxes that go down. All right, Steve, if you want to go to the next slide, it's COVID-19 update time again. We've had some changes since last time we talked about this back in November. Where we expect things to be tomorrow, or late tomorrow, is we'll have the extension of the state's curfew through the beginning, to the beginning of January. We expect Public Health Dayton, Montgomery County at their board meeting tomorrow to do the same thing for their stay-at-home advisory. And we also know that we've gone from purple to red now. So if you recall, we went to reduce programming. And essentially, that was effective November 30th, but by the time we implemented it completely, it was about December the 3rd. And we ran that through, or are running that through December the 20th. So along that lines, the schools shut down their athletic programs. And they have now reopened their athletic programs effective December the 11th. So the question is next steps. And so our recommendation at this point is we are gonna extend the 12/20 date for reduced programming to January 10th. Our theory on that is simply we're taking into consideration all of the advice we are receiving. So the advice being the CDC, the Dayton and Montgomery County Public Health, State Health. We're taking in their advice and their actions. And then looking at, you know, where we are and, and some other factors. So, and I'm just gonna call this the holiday factor. We know that Thanksgiving and Christmas were holiday factors, and the state reacted accordingly to try to keep people a little more isolated during those activities. And we're choosing January 10th because that will give us a period of time that if folks during the New Year's Eve holiday expose themselves or become positive, and that'll give that time to happen before they would expose anybody else in our programs. So giving that, that period until January 10th is simply another safety net. And frankly, we discussed this at length the last couple of days, trying to decide between January 5th and January 10th. And we decided that in light of our conservative nature, we again caution on the side of safety and go to January 10th. That is not without consequences. As you know, our large programs and team sport activities are not taking place right now. So our hockey programs, our swim meets, our youth and adult sports are not taking place. And we're recommending that they don't start taking place until January 11th. So there are some consequences there. There's also consequences with the school athletic programs. For example, we, we host a meet. We've already, I believe, had to cancel one meet for Fairmount High School. Waiting until January 11th would cause the cancellation of another one as well. So we know there are, there are consequences, but in looking at the New Year's holiday, looking at what we've done previously to be cautious, but not close everything down completely, we're looking at January 11th as a restart date for essentially all programming, which would include swim meets, hockey teams, and youth and adult sports, and, you know, some other stuff as well. I do wanna make mention of the fact, though, we, we will continue to follow protocol. So for instance, the state has issued guidance on swim meets and swimming events. And we're gonna have to continue to follow that guidance. And our pool, as you know, our indoor pool does not have an expansive deck area. So it's gonna be very difficult to host a meet and follow those guidelines. So deciding, or determining, or after we decide what we're gonna do tonight, we'll get with the schools right away and see if there's a way to do a meet with inside those protocols. It could be very difficult, and they may elect to do something else. But we still have to follow protocols regardless of what date we move back into things. So my recommendation to you tonight is we'll just continue our reduced programming through January 10th. We'll go back to full programming on January 11th. And our guidance will continue to be the information we received from the CDC, State Health, and local county health. And more specifically, I would say, we'll probably take all of that guidance into consideration rather than just relying on whether we go from red to purple. And I believe the school district is taking that same approach as well with the plan they just released late last week. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All in.
Thumbs up, no objections, no.
All in.
All right. I guess then we'll just go ahead and move on to the, the next slide. And Steve will give you a just quick update on Ridgeway Bridge. And maybe we lost Steve, I don't know. Nope, here he comes.
Sorry, I'm trying to do some on my laptop and I got things all over the place. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So Ridgeway Bridge, the shutdown last, this past weekend went very well. Had no issues with traffic whatsoever. They had things shut down around by 6:30 or so Saturday morning. Got a break in the weather as the day went on, and they accomplished everything that they needed to do as far as getting the sidewalks and things like that, removed the parapet walls, et cetera. Slide here. So they planned to continue work this week and just kind of cleaning up things and getting ready for Friday. A small change in the plans for this weekend. Instead of shutting down Thursday evening, shutting Dorothy down Thursday evening, they planned to do it very early in the morning on Friday. So like 4:00 or 5:00 AM, they'll, they'll close Dorothy to traffic. Then at that point, they will mobilize the crane. They're gonna be bringing in a very large crane to set up near the bridge. That'll probably happen around 6:00 or 7:00 AM. And they're hoping by mid-morning, they'll be ready to start taking beams off the bridge. That process will likely take more than one day. So they'll have the rest of the day on Friday doing that work. And then the majority of the day on Saturday as well to finish that up, hopefully by Saturday evening at the latest. So if you'd like to come out and see it, I'm not necessarily recommending that you get in the construction site, but if you do want to see what's going on, a decent place to watch is at the south side of the bridge on Ridgeway. There's kind of a grassy area that's fairly safe to stand and watch. So not advocating it necessarily, but if you are curious and wanna, and wanna see what the crane looks like, that's a good place to kind of view it from a distance on, on Friday and Saturday. So, Mark, that's all I have. Unless there's any questions, I'll turn it back over to you.
At this point, leaf pickup is complete. And unfortunately, we're turning our equipment back into snowplows. And we might need that yet this week, so. But leaf pickup is complete, the yard debris center closed. So our website indicates that and directs our residents to place their leaves inside their refuge containers or they can take them down to the county site on InCreed. So, and I think we have, I'll have that in the community update as well. And then Greg and I met, I guess it was last week already, with some folks out of Miami Valley Research Park on wayfinding. So Greg, do you want to give that update?
Yeah, glad to. So we've been talking about wayfinding out of Research Park for a while. As those of you who drive through there know, the existing signs have been there since the early 1980s. And they look like they've been there since the early 1980s. So Mark, I met Thursday with the majority of the Research Park Design Review Committee and with Alan Shear. Alan Shear is the architect that the Research Park Association uses for all their architectural needs. And Alan presented some signs for us to take a look at, presented a draft of some locations for the signs. And that, that went well. We think we have a pretty good start on what the signage will look like. The next step, I think we're gonna locate all the existing signs in the research park and then determine which ones will be replaced with wayfinding. So the wayfinding signs are really gonna be at the entranceway to the park, at the intersections, and then at the driveways that lead to multiple buildings. We're really looking at these to be tenant signs so much as just get you to the building and the tenant names will be on those buildings. So the next step is we will review the signs we're looking at with the Research Park Association membership, which is one person from each of the ownerships of the buildings and land at the park. Once we do that, we will proceed. And then eventually, the final decision will be made by the Miami Valley Research Park Association Board of Directors. And more importantly, the signs we paid for by the Miami Valley Research Park Association as well. So we have a pretty good start on that, and we should be able to get these done first part of next year, we're hoping.
Greg, I got a question. You said that because some, finding some of those businesses back there is challenging. There's not gonna be like the big sign that says, if you turn down this street, these six businesses are on there?
We were looking more at addresses. We talked about that a lot, but with everybody's phone, everybody's car, really, they just put in addresses now and drive to them. It's really kind of problematic when there's that many tenants in a building. You know, if you're driving 45 miles an hour down Research Park, and the lettering is so small because the signs can't be very big, it becomes problematic. And then Charlie was talking about how through the years, you know, you gotta change them so often, the signs fall out. So we were looking more at wayfinding signs to get you to the building and the address you're looking for.
Well, I guess that's okay if you're not just heading over there to go to Wilmer Hail and don't have any idea what the hell Wilmer Hail's address is.
Yeah, we, we talked about that too, Don, and especially with ICP, because they have multiple buildings right now that are fairly empty. And the, the whole concept plays into their concept, which is on the private property, they're gonna have a signage package for all their buildings. And most of the larger existing buildings have that as well now. So we think when you play it in conjunction with the other component of it, we think it'll work out just fine. And that's why Greg mentioned right now we're mapping or going to map where all the existing signs are and what they look like. Because that will impact the placement of our directional signage so that we, in essence, point you to the private property sign that better identifies the building.
Well, can you give me some information about other research parks and/or office complexes? Because I have never seen one unless somebody knows the address that's supposed to have a meeting at Wilmer Hail and heads over there or whatever and has no idea and is driving on the left side of the street, right side of the street, trying to figure out where a particular business is based upon an address. I, I understand if somebody says, hey, meetings at Wilmer Hail, and here's the address, but I'm just, I'm a little, it, I'm struggling with it.
And some of those buildings also have multiple entrances, you know, on, on, actually, and you get into them from different streets. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to, again, we'll be working with the building owners, but, you know, obviously, everything's gonna take you to that main customer entrance. For the multi-tenant ones, it's gonna be up to the private landowners to use their internal signage, much like Synchrony did at Kettering Business Park to get people to the door they wanted them to go to.
Okay. Yeah, but the new signs we did over there also indicated go right to this, go left to that.
Yeah, yeah, we had fewer tenants out there, so we, we did arrows and names as opposed to arrows and numbers.
Well, I'd like to have some indication, some research done on other parks and that, because I'm, I, I think that's problematic.
Hey, Mark?
Yeah, Bill?
A question actually for Greg. What's the follow-up, Greg, on the group out there doing something about all the dead trees? We talked about that in late summer, early fall. Was there any kind of decision reached?
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing extremely well, I think, in that area. The ICP group, if you've been out there recently, they are really, all the dead trees on their properties are gone. All the existing trees have been limbed up and shaped the way they should be. And they're getting ready to put some new landscaping back in for the dead they took out. Their, their property looks 100% different and better than it did before. And then Charlie Giles and I met with Kodak and also with Mike from TR Gear, who does the landscaping for the Research Park Association out there. We met with Kodak, talked to them about their dead tree situation. They agreed 100% that their trees look bad and they need to take care of them. They are on it. They got in the budget for next year. And Mike and TR Gear is gonna give them some estimates. So they're on board 100%, Kodak is. They'll be taking care of it. And then we also met with the gentleman from the 3100 Building where Vivio is and BWI. And while he is already taking down some dead trees, he's basically just chopping them off at the ground level. His concern was he doesn't have the budget to do this all in one fell swoop because he has a lot of landscaping problems out there, as you, way worse than Kodak even. So he has agreed to work with Mike and TR Gear. We left it there. We're gonna mark the trees and kind of do it in stages. He was gonna take the worst trees down first and then lesser trees after that. There's something called needle cast this year, I guess, which is killing pretty much all the pine trees it comes into contact with. So they're gonna take care of that, and then he's putting, trying to get his budget increased to put more landscaping back rather than just take out. But I don't think it'll be to the level it was prior. They put a lot of little landscaping in, and now it's a lot of big landscaping. And some places, frankly, it's too much. But yeah, Bill, I think we're making, yeah, you should go and look at ICP's property. They really did a nice job. And again, Kodak was totally on board. They're on it, and we're working with 3100 Building.
Great. Thanks for your follow-up, Greg.
Yes, sir.
All right, with that, Your Honor, I think we're ready for executive session.
All righty, is there a motion to enter into executive session under Section 121.06K of the Codified Ordinances for the purposes of property matters, economic development, and negotiation with organizations or individuals? Take it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session. We are in executive session.
All right. Thanks, Mary. Um, Your Honor, we're back on the record for the workshop and the only other item I have is other. So if there's anything else anybody has a question about, I'm happy to answer. We're piling that question off on Greg and he's happy to answer. If not, now you know why we decided to start at 6:30 instead of 6 o'clock. Uh, we've got, looks like about 10 minute break and then we'll start if everybody's back by 7:30, we'll be ready to go by 7:35 for the council meeting this evening.
Perfect. See you then.